On Thursday, April 20th, this is the regular meeting of the Town Council Finance Committee. The purpose of today's meeting is to review departmental budgets as part of the overall budget for the town. On the agenda, there are three, actually, there'll be five items in three segments. There is an adjustment, and I'll explain that in a second. But the first budget that we'll be looking at is finance and assessing. Then we'll be looking at SEDCO and the adjustment to the agenda is that we'll also be adding the Planning Department to that since Karen Martin, the President or Director, I can't remember the title, Director of SEDCO is also our interim planning director.
Empress.
Empress, that's right, I forgot, sorry. She's also our current interim planning director. And then we'll take up Public Works. With that, I did want to mention just for the record, for as far as a call to order and those presences, that Chairman Peter Hayes is at a previous engagement and could not make it this evening. So both Chris and I will be balancing responsibilities and running the meeting, but I think it will go fairly smoothly. He does, he will be here and we'll catch up regarding our conversations today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom and our Finance Director Ruth to begin the process.
Great. Ruth?
Oh, I'm sorry, I always forget this. Item number three is approval of the minutes for April 13th, 2017. Is there a motion?
Move approved as written.
And I'll second that, no adjustments, all in favor, and that's two to zero. Thank you.
Sorry, keep your interest.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's why you keep me in the gab, I guess, right? Tell me what to do. With that, now, Tom and Ruth, I can turn it over to you guys.
Great. So Ruth's obviously here to assist you generally, but also to speak to the Finance Department. I'll be collaborating on the assessing component there. I might suggest with finance, we start with the revenue portion.
Tab three, page two.
The majority of that page is finance-related revenues. Tab two?
No, tab three, page two.
Tab two, page two.
No, tab three, page two.
I'll shut up.
So good evening.
Trying to help you, Chris.
No, I appreciate that, I don't want to fumble around.
So, excuse me, the revenues for the Finance Department have increased over last year by about 200, almost 215,000. The bulk of that has to do with the excise revenue. As with other communities, we've seen a surge in the purchase of new vehicles and that has allowed us to benefit from that through the excise tax. Couple of items of note regarding excise is that there have been a number of bills, is that what they're called, at the state level where they're trying to reduce the amount of revenue to receive. So far, most of those have gone through with ought not to pass, which is good for the town because we get to retain those revenues. There are still a couple out there. One has to do with veterans who are disabled and that one, I think, is still in the works. There's another one with the Transportation Committee that is trying to take the excise of our major trucks. And I think that is going to be discussed tomorrow at their regular transportation meeting for the budget. So we're not out of the woods yet with regards to that, but...
So the long and short of that statement is that the state's looking to take more money away from the communities.
That is correct.
In spite of that, we have increased the projections by $200,000 this year, and I would direct your attention to the projection. This is an area that you may want to revisit before you conclude your deliberations. There potentially is more money there, as much as another 200,000.
Is there, I couldn't find it in the beginning, is there a trend chart that shows excise over time as a total dollar? I know that we tinkered with that a couple of times and kind of been very aggressive, and that's one that you always have to be careful of because in a downturn economy, it's the first thing that will go down.
I did take a look, I don't think it's here, but during the recession, each year we were reducing our estimated revenue because in the prior year, we weren't receiving what we estimated. That trend has turned, whether or not it will continue in that way remains to be seen. I do think this projection, I looked at it again this morning, and we probably tweaked it up even a little bit higher than what it is. So as long as the state doesn't play with the excise formula or anything, I think we, this is an area we can, we can up.
We can provide that. Summary analysis has one, but it simply reports excise and other taxes as a percentage of total revenue, so that really doesn't isolate revenue.
Right.
We can sort of provide that if we don't...
We can provide that stuff there.
I'm just curious. I don't recall us ever not meeting our excise revenue projection.
No, there's been a couple, a couple of tight calls.
Tight calls. But we've always been fairly aggressive year over year, kind of that increasing it, but we've always met it.
I'm just always anxious to not rely on that too much because it is volatile, it's not necessarily very stable. I mean, if it comes in, that's great, but I don't want to start making that a basis for continuing, continuing to rely on it, you know, I mean, if it's a short term.
Well, that new fund balance policy, it also helps support the fund balance in the sense that that goes directly into that fund balance, if not budgeted to be used.
Given some of the challenges we still face in this budget, this may be an area you want to go back to though. So I think it's probably all in revenue, or...
Well, I did want to ask, because there was one significant change, it's obviously much significantly lower, but I believe, the color on this is still not that great, by the way. Is it investment interest? Am I looking at the right line? It's a $14,000 increase.
With the change in the interest rates, with the Federal Reserve upping the rate, that tends to benefit us because we now are seeing higher interest rates, better interest rates than what they have been.
Okay.
So that has helped. We've also changed a little bit in how we're doing some of our investments. We have a couple of investment firms that are a little bit more aggressive in terms of the investments that we're using. I mean, most of it is still in CDs, but we're, we have our portfolio, we've lettered it out, so we're earning higher rates for the longer term.
So help me understand a little bit, Ruth, what are those, what are those investments? What are they for, or is it just a reserve, kind of like a reserve fund for us, or what's the purpose of having those investments?
We have some funds, like our cemetery funds, those are scholarship money. If we have any bond proceeds, those are earning interest. We have quite a few special revenue funds for the revenues that we earn, that we collect on those are for specific purposes. If those funds aren't necessarily needed at this point in time, such as some of the impact fees, we build those funds up for a point in time when we need to use them. In the meantime, they stay in an investment account and earn interest. These are specific to just the general fund, so, you know, after taxes come in, we have some funds available before we pay our debt and we invest in that. There's no other questions on that, then we can go to tab four, page...
Thank you.
And on the expenditure side, I'm happy to answer any questions. Our total budget, if we exclude assessing for the minutes, the finance and revenue budget has, shows a 2.1% increase overall, and the bulk of that has to do with the full-time employees who retired and we replaced that employee with two part-time people, and so pretty much we've stayed on the full-time benefit cost. There are some lines that show like really big percentages, but most of those are like, there's one that shows a 20% increase, it's a $1,400 increase, but it has to do with the registry of deeds when we file our liens or we renew these, physical costs to all of those.
I think you're on a different schedule, we're in the narrative part, I think.
Oh.
But are you on a schedule that's in a different tab?
No, I'm just talking in general about contract services.
I mean, there's line item detail, I think is what she is.
There's line items detailed in the back of the book that's pretty much what I'm referring to. But essentially, for the most part, we haven't seen much change. We have an 80% increase in our property line, however, we're looking to, which turns into a $1,000 increase, we're doing some ergonomic, we're looking at some ergonomic changes for some of our staff.
I mean, the big thing is benefits from wages.
Yep. And that results $70,000 increase, and you said that was because of reallocation of resources to increase positions?
To taking one full, well, the largest increase has to do, like I said, the 2% has to do with the accounting and the revenue office. The major increases have to do with the assessor's office because we are going from, we're trying to go from a contracted service to a full-time position which includes benefits. And assessing is by itself is approximately a 30% increase.
So Tom, how does your announcement last night regarding the situation with the replacement for the assessor going through the contracted services, obviously, you didn't know what you were needed to do then, is this sufficient in the budget to cover?
I believe we have adequate resources. Effectively, I would pay, you know, this contracted service from the full-time lines until that contract runs out, and then there will be existing resources to hire a full-time assessor for the balance of the year. So I think there's adequate resources here to cover both.
And we've made adjustments to the benefit lines to adjust for a later hire.
And just to mention, because we do get different viewers in different meetings, last night, the manager advised the council that they are looking at a contracted service agreement with, I don't remember the names of the party, but two people...
David and Elizabeth Sawyer.
Right, two, one from South Portland, retired, one from South Portland, and one from...
Wyndham, retired.
Wyndham. So we're looking at contracting services rather than immediately going into a full hire since there's a kind of a gap in what's available out there.
Yeah, Council Chair Bedine was kind enough to sit through interviews and I think can attest to the fact that there really wasn't a viable candidate in the first round, and I think it's best to get through commitment and then go back at it in the fall when things kind of settle down in the assessing world, hope for better success.
When you're only talking about a million dollars, but a $90 million budget is pretty simple, why is it constrained to just labor costs?
Pretty much just labor costs, and, you know, labor is a big portion of it, they, and mostly for the revenue office, since they're, they're our first contact with citizens of the town. Training is an important goal for finance to keep them abreast of all of the requirements. And customer service, communication is the goal for the council, so, you know, we really try to keep those folks up to speed and trained and...
And I just want to make sure too, that you're not proposing any new positions in this at all, right? This is just operationally increases over...
The only other change we made was we took a seasonal person and make them, they're not coming back, but we're replacing them with a traditional part-time person, so we have a couple more hours for that. We may or may not need them. It's not a scheduled time, it's going to be on an as needed.
And that's in the, in the accounting group or in the revenues group?
That's in the revenue group, it's all in the revenue group. And in the salary and benefits line, it's not actually highlighted, but the full-time wage line has decreased and the part-time wage line has increased to allow for that for the fact that we have the two.
The net of that change is nearly negligible.
Yeah.
It's negligible.
The revenue office itself only had a 0.4% increase from last year. I do have a little bit of time, if you wanted to go over debt, or you want to do it at the end, or how long?
Let's do it at the end, because I might have a longer discussion.
Yeah, that's a much...
Sounds good?
Thank you very much. And next, we'll be moving into Ms. Empress Martin's world of SEDCO and our Planning Department. I have a tie that matches that house, by the way. And a pocket cloth. So this sophisticated gentleman dot com, and you can hit it for 20 bucks.
Okay. Don't know where to go with that.
Better just to let it later go anywhere.
People are learning sometimes, just love to speak and talk.
Well, thank you for letting me appear today to talk about both planning and SEDCO. I really appreciate that. If we can maybe go alphabetical today, we'll do planning first, and I'm going to let Tom tell us tab whatever and which page.
I'm sure. But you're going for a loop when you...
Sorry about that.
Can we start at the revenue, which is tab three, page two? Sorry, page three. There's really only one question, revenue is a very flat, but there is one jump, which is the building permits, that's pretty significant.
Yeah, oh, you wanted to revenue?
Just that one item, I think is, I mean, it's the only option, just one.
Sure, sure. The revenue, in terms of revenues, the reason there's that jump is they anticipated revenues from some of the multifamily development that is coming online. And I'll talk about that on the expense side as well, but that really is, in a nutshell, what that, that jump in revenues will be.
So is this from the increase in the reserve pool that we, that we approved, or because we're, we're capped out every year with building permits, so that...
Right. Those increase in the fees is really about the building inspections that are anticipated?
It didn't stop you or correct you for anything, so I'm going to keep, I was looking at you.
Okay, great. Well, one of the things, I did want to start out by saying thank you to the planning and code enforcement staff. You know, they've just been so great for the last week and a half, you know, their expertise, their sense of understanding what they need to do, and really a great sense of humor. So I just have to say thank you to them, and they've helped me cram a bit for being able to present the planning budget. So let's start from the top. We talked about expenses. At this point, we're a little over a million, 1.039 million dollars for fiscal year 2018, talking about a 9% increase, which is about $86,000. The 84% of that number is really due to wages and benefits. Just under half of the increase that we're talking about overall, which is about $40,000, somewhere in there, that is going to be used to really hire a part-time code enforcement officer, and that really is to help us through the crunch of when that multifamily comes, comes online. And so the, the concept is that the revenues from the fees are going to cover that part-time code enforcement officer. And it really will be great to have that extra capacity. You know, summer is particularly busy for the code enforcement folks, and this person will really relieve some of the pressure, particularly on the commercial code enforcement officer, to be able to do that. And it, one of the things we certainly have talked about in-house is that, you know, that may be a part-time person, it also may be a contracted service. It really just depends on when these other projects are coming online, because we want to time it with that. And there's also certainly a shortage of people, you know, probably in code enforcement and in the construction industry, so we may need to be a little flexible on whether or not that's a contracted from a service perspective, or we can actually find a part-time person. So...
So, I'm sorry, what's the impact if that person doesn't come online? Is it just longer inspection, longer waits for inspection?
Yes, it'll be longer waits for inspection, and time is money with respect to the inspection, you know, folks, when they're ready for inspection, they really want to see people out there within the next few days. And our code enforcement officer, our commercial code enforcement officer in particular, he's really tightly booked. He is, he's at capacity. So I really think that from a staffing perspective and from a service delivery perspective to the folks who need the inspections, I don't see how we can go, go around not having some assistance.
Can you, can you, and I don't necessarily need it right now, but could we get some feedback on what kind of delays we might be talking about if we don't bring that person in, and we're talking weeks, months?
Okay.
You know, just ballpark.
Sure.
I don't need anything specific.
Okay, I don't think I'm prepared to answer that, so I will get that, sure.
I'm here with you.
Sure, absolutely. And again, you know, the idea is the fees definitely offset the cost of the new service or the additional help for delivering the service. What you also see in terms of the increase is the sustainable, we pay for a third of the sustainability coordinator who has done some wonderful work this year and has really helped us with, you know, some of the watershed planning work, so we're very pleased and very excited about that. And again, we pay for a third of that position in our budget. Other expenses, we've really tried to keep to really a level, a level funding. And I could take you through both planning and code enforcement. If you like the planning highlights, it's really, you know, the increases are due to the staffing, the 3% or 4% increase in, you know, both reflecting the cost of living and the healthcare costs that go with the, the employment. The 19,300, that's the third of our sustainable, not the, the third of the cost of the sustainability coordinator, we're not dividing her in three. You know, we have a little minor increase in supplies, that's just reflecting, you know, the needs of a busy office. And so overall, planning and engineering is a 7.4% increase, again, mostly due to staffing, existing staffing. Code enforcement, really a level service, if you will, except for the, the addition of the code enforcement officer. And then I just, I can't stop myself from wanting to, you know, just touch on a few highlights because I just think the work of the Planning and Codes Department is so important, and they've done such a great job every year, but, you know, there are some really important things on the agenda for next year, certainly the comp plan, which we'll talk about when we talk about the CIP. We're also looking at, as part of that, really purchasing a module for our GIS program that will really do software modeling for community impact analysis. And it's our answer to the growth and services study that was done 10 or 15 years ago, this new modeling technique, number one, once it's built, and that's what, we would be expending some money for that, once it's built, it is an ongoing model that we can look at and build for the future. And I just think that's critically important as we look at both doing more impact analysis for projects, but also, you know, really tracking trends in development, how the pattern affects the cost of development, and this module will help us do that. So that really is part and parcel with the comprehensive plan, but I just did want to highlight that because that's actually an ongoing, workable model that we can use from then on. So I'm just, the data person in me is very excited about that. You know, there are a couple of others, they seem small, but I think there'll be a really big impact for our customers. One is really a reorganization of the zoning ordinance to make it a little more readable. As you know, it's about 400 pages, and sometimes it's hard to find everything. So really, doing some of that work, I think, will really make a big difference for our customers. We do need to do a little bit of an update on the shoreline zoning. The state has come up with some additional, not criteria, but some revisions to the shoreline zoning, and that will need to be done this coming year. And some of the changes, I haven't looked at them all, but some of the changes, I think are going to be really great for the administration of the ordinance and for the ease and understanding of what's going on there.
Karen, can you comment too? We got FEMA map updates, that's going to make an impact as well.
Absolutely. Next on the, next on the list is, you know, really continuing the work of analyzing the FEMA maps, they've just come in, I think Jay Chase here has been doing a lot of that coordination for the work. So we are in the process of receiving them, I guess we just got them this week.
This week?
Yes, this week. And there's been a lot of investment in looking at the previous iterations of them, and so we're trying to figure out what's been revised and how that will affect our, our acceptance of the maps as they are. So our understanding, from talking to Jay, is that we think the time, the time period or the window for, you know, making any appeals is, will start in July, and I believe it's a 90-day appeal period. And I don't know, Tom, if you've got...
Yeah, and in that regard, I'm wondering what your, the reduction that we're proposing under boards and committees is on page 37, contracted services, the bulk of that number is something we call planning initiatives, and it's historically gone to fund all sorts of small... gone to fund all sorts of small, little, kind of consultant and engineering projects in support of all the kind of committee work, long-range planning, transportation committee, conservation. And I would put the FEMA flood maps kind of in that category. I'm wondering out loud a bit to you as to whether or not we should perhaps put that back to where it was last year, maybe give another $5,000 back to where it was in the, in the current year, just to make sure that we have some monies to continue with our consultants and see that through appeal. There potentially are, are massive impacts on hundreds of properties in town, depending on, um, these FEMA flood maps. And, uh, the appeals are complicated, it actually requires the development of a unique model, given the unique geography of our MAR system. Uh, it doesn't work well with the models that FEMA is using up and down the east coast, frankly. Uh, we've made, as Karen's mentioned, a fairly significant investment in that regard, and it'd be a shame not to kind of maximize that. And we can't expect individual homeowners to necessarily be in a position to fund that or appeal those on a property-by-property basis. So that's been the thinking. We've been in a holding pattern for, I think it's 2013, frankly, uh, but it sounds like this will be the year where we're gonna have to really exert ourselves. The long way of saying is, I'm thinking that we may want to beef that up slightly to make sure that we have the funding to engage the consultants and see it through.
So my question is, is $5,500 gonna be enough for the full appeal, and what's that process look like? I mean, are we talking legal, or are we talking just more technical engineering?
It's technical engineering. Uh, it could ultimately become legal, but, uh, there's a, there's a, there's a process that's really technical. It's engineers, talk to engineers, if you will, with the, there's a whole separate panel of technical experts that analyze the merits of the appeal and such.
Right. I think the answer is we, we don't know yet.
Yeah. Right now, our consultant is going through the maps and really comparing, uh, this current draft of maps to the prior drafts, so we can assess, uh, how they've changed, if at all. Uh, if they haven't changed much, uh, we clearly have hundreds of properties that will be severely negatively affected, and I would be recommending that we do move forward with the appeal. The, the unknown is whether we have sufficient resources to see that through at the end. So it's just new information since it was put together.
So my initial response is, um, one, for such a small dollar amount, I would rather, uh, rather than reacting impulsively today, even though it is so small, is to wait until we always have this reconciliation process at the end, after we talk about policy directions as far as, you know, that apply across the board. And if you feel at that time that that should be increased and offset by other activities, then I think that's part of that conversation, and really us making that determination right now.
But we just wanted to touch on it while it was funny.
Right.
I'll bring it back if, if necessary. And by then, we will have had, uh, I think, an initial consult back from our consultant in terms of, uh, how they look, what the level of effort might be required.
Right. And then, if there are any questions, we could talk about the two items from the CIP?
Yep. I'm sorry, um, so although I didn't, um, I noticed there's something in CIP regarding a reconfiguration of the, of the area for planning, is that correct?
Uh, not for next year.
Oh, okay.
I'm taking out.
Okay.
Much as there's a grin, it was, uh, taken out.
We started the conversation around that last year, which was, I believe, taken out last year as well, towards. And just for the, what that was, I think there was a recommendation to reconfigure the layout of the planning department and the customer areas.
Exactly.
So this scenario, when they come in, because it's a very tight combination, so...
It's a very inefficient layout, both in the offices and the, the front end, so...
But there are two capital, um, equipment requests?
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, one, and then two capital project requests. The equipment can be found on tab six, page seven.
Right. And what you see is, um, we do have one of our, uh, the, the, we have two leases, and one of them is coming up for, um...
You should define what a lease is.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a, no, um, it's one of our electric cars. And one of those is coming up for lease at the end of July, and so we've, we've, uh, targeted about $12,000 to, um, hopefully buy out the, the lease at the end of its lease. Um, we are waiting for some numbers from, um, the dealership to tell us what that would be, uh, but we would need to replace that, uh, that, that vehicle.
So I have to apologize, I'm looking at behind tab seven, and I'm on, it's not, page two talks about, um, capital projects that have, two projects for $105,000, that's not including the vehicle. What, where is the, and then I go to the written narrative, and then I don't see any vehicle mentioned.
I beg your pardon, I thought I said tab, I meant to say tab six, page seven.
Okay.
I'm having trouble with my tabs tonight, actually.
So that's $12,500?
Mm-hmm.
Does that expect the residual value would be to buy the vehicle out, um, at the end of the term?
Yeah, so, so, um, not that I recall, but how's that experiment been?
I'm...
Just, let me speak to it, it's been very good. I mean, we've never, at least during my tenure, leased a vehicle. Uh, we did so because we did such an attractive deal through a CMP grant, they bought down the cost of the lease. Uh, so it was, it was really a no-brain financial decision that we do that. We're nearing the end of that 36-month term, as with most, uh, closed-end, uh...
Yes, close-in.
Closed-end leases, there's a, an option to buy for an agreed-up price, and 12,500, I believe, is the, was the agreed-up residual value. The vehicle has performed incredibly well. As expected, it's done everything and done some that we've needed it to do. It, it doesn't travel really beyond boundaries of Scarborough, but for a couple of occasions, and so it serves their needs, um, around town very, very well.
Is it, if you don't buy this, um, is there any cost for not buying at the end of the lease?
No, we walk away, but we're without a vehicle.
Right, I just, um, 'cause, um, I remember reading something way back about electric cars having a very large, um, expense when you try to get rid of them because of the, the batteries. And so I didn't know if that, any of that cost was transferred on to the lease fee when you turn that in, if it's at its, end of its useful life.
I have not seen that.
Right, yeah, I, I don't think so. In fact, I, I talked with the, um, the dealership earlier this, this week, and, um, they are going to give us, you know, some options too, because we did ask, you know, we could, give us the price for buying it out, but also let us know, you know, is there something that is coming online, is there a better, is there a better use of our residual funds, so to speak, just in case there, um, if there's such improvement in the battery life or in, um, you know, the ability of the lease to go further, um, we certainly would like to know that. Um, so they are going to get back to us with those, with those answers.
And what's this, what's the vehicle being used for right now?
It is used, um, by code enforcement staff when they're out in the field. Um, it's also used by staff if they're going out to, um, you know, meetings in Portland or, or wherever. It's also used occasionally by, um, uh, other than planning and code enforcement staff, so if it gets used, they're out almost all the time.
And this is in lieu of a mileage reimbursement, let's say, for using a personal vehicle or something like that, so there is, is that fair to say?
Yeah, again, during my tenure here, we've never had that arrangement, that somebody in a town provided vehicles for staff to perform their, their functions.
Tough, I, I mean, I don't want to belabor this, it's only $12,500, but, um, under the coding, A stands for appropriations, and then M is multiple sources, or, oh, what is multiple sources? I don't, what is that?
Does that mean in this...
You're appropriating this whole amount with multiple, oh, multiple sources within the appropriations.
Does it say, I didn't...
It says A slash M, that's for, I see, one that's in the budget that has that, that I saw.
Oh, God.
And M stands for according to the key, funding from several sources, so is it just several accounts? It's not, I, it's not completely, I mean, when you appropriate, it comes out of, it's tactics, it's...
I don't know if that means there were supposed to be some sort of a trading value, maybe, I'm not sure, I'll have to look it up into the details.
I was just curious for the code, that's not, that's a serious, uh...
So just to clarify, there's a couple of ones here. We've got assessing department is the software licensing. We've got planning department, electric vehicle, and then we've got, um, for capital projects. Are you gonna get to that, or are we... Okay. But just to clarify, there are, there are two different lines, right? One for planning, one for assessing? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm on page, I'm on page, or tab six, page two and three. We've got assessing, no, I don't, we're just saying, we've got, so there are, for this department, there's two, actually two...
Right, we, as far as I understand, we have, we have two, two items, um, in, you know, for next year. Um, one is the comprehensive plan, and one is, um, this vehicle.
No. You're, you're including assessing, which was the previous presentation. So this is just planning.
Right, just planning.
And then if you go to cap seven, it's the capital projects, which is, is the other two items that Karen's talking about, which is the planning piece, the two planning pieces.
Yeah.
Which is a total of $105,000, so that's correct.
Right, so part, the, the first piece of that is definitely, it's the comprehensive plan. Um, you know, we're starting it this year, we had some, uh, funds, um, that were appropriated last year to, um, start the process, and this is the balance of, um, the two-year project. So, um, definitely, you know, the comprehensive plan, it is being, um, allocated to consulting funds. We do have a consultant onboard, um, and that's part of the process that will kick off in May.
I will say that I, um, I'm extremely pleased with the selection of consultant. I think when you meet them, you'll share my enthusiasm. Um, Councilor Donovan participated as chair at the time, or media past chair, uh, in those interviews, and I think he, he would concur as well. I was forced to sign a contract, I was carefully negotiating language around the contract price, that I committed what was in the, what is in the current budget, and, uh, acknowledged that I needed to secure this remaining funding. So we certainly are hopeful that we're able to do that. Uh, it would make entire sense, I mean, keep the same consulting team start to finish. And so I, uh, we hope you find, uh, finding your way to help fund that, that project, see it through.
Right.
Yes, I gotta, um, so which, is it the municipal campus plan, or is it comprehensive planning that was divvied up between different departments and contributed, including OSID agencies like the library? Which, which plan was that?
Well, I proposed that about three months ago, and I backtracked more recently in the last, uh, three weeks. Uh, we brought that back, but in a abbreviated form, and, um, I have a, a design consultant on, uh, looking at just this portion of our campus, uh, basically from Town Hall, including Memorial Park. Uh, that is being funded by a number of funding sources, but it's a much smaller...
But that's not, so that's not included in any...
This is the balance to complete the other two-thirds of the campus, if you will, and I have not reached out, I've not pursued, this would be the fund entirely, I've not pursued to, um, source funding from others to help with the effort. I did that really because it was mid-budget year, it was not planned, and I was looking to be creative.
So what, I'm sorry, you can...
Yeah, I'm thinking, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I'm looking at the comprehensive plan update process, $80,000, it's B for bonded, is that, is that correct?
So it could be appropriated, that's, it's got 10-year life, uh, certainly it could be appropriated, and I'm not gonna disagree there.
So this is an option we can look at?
Absolutely.
And as Tom said, the $25,000 is for the municipal campus master plan, and so that's our budget request for 2018.
Yep.
Okay.
For now. Try to balance some things in my head above, think about...
So I think, you know, the, the upshot is we tried, or Dan certainly tried very hard to keep level funding, um, and not increase the other parts of the, the budget. Um, the, uh, two positions are the, paying for the sustainable, the third of the sustainability coordinator, um, again, I think we're gonna see real results from that, both from the other departments, but also from planning, um, and then the code enforcement assistance.
So the, I guess, Tom, the only comment I would share, um, and this kind of ties in also with the, uh, the other position that we were, were talking about, or particularly in assessing, is that, I think that there needs to be a balance looked at. Um, so while I understand and appreciate the need for additional staff to support, uh, where we're going, uh, we also are challenged in, um, this plan, although you're not assessing, but planning and assessing, in making sure that the, um, compensation for the top position is at market level, because there may, there may need to be an adjustment made, and to me, that adjustment should come out of what is being budgeted in the other areas. So if you need more money in order to hire, um, you know, a, um, an assessor that is qualified, then to me, um, you would take that away from the part-time position that you would, that you're requesting, and not necessarily come back and ask for additional funding to support a new hire.
Well, we're talking about two different departments.
I, and, uh, but, but from the allocation basis, it's one budget, one town, so I'm going, it's one budget across, but, but departments as well, but there needs to be a balance, and it's really your job to kind of balance that, I'm just saying that...
I, I'm not here before you saying that I don't have adequate resources, I, I...
I just want to, I just want to make sure, because, you know, part of the reason could be compensation, you know, people might not be willing to move into a new job because our compensation level might be too low, and I just think that given the circumstances, we need to look within the budget that we have, to be, if we have to beef it up, then we look within that budget and not come back and ask for more.
Thank you for that, I, I'm confident that what we have in there is very competitive in the market, it's just it's the, it's the shallow pool already.
Oh, yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So, um, bring up sustainability coordinator, we had a couple of new positions we had last year we were gonna talk about at some point, and I'll leave it to town manager's discretion of when you wanna bring that, if you wanna do it, you know, um, a third, a third, a third, or something, or, um, just to kind of, we're gonna evaluate the, the, um, sustainability coordinator and the assistant town manager. Just to kind of give feedback to the group, because we were talking about making sure that they were viable financially, I guess, at this point, or that they were, there were some cost savings. So I, I'd like to come back to that at some point in these discussions, just to see where we're at, um, so I'll, I'll defer to your discretion of when you'd like to do it.
I think we're talking about it as a value analysis, added value, right?
Yeah, and it doesn't matter to me where, it's just, just at some point to, we can look at that too.
Very good, we're pleased to do that, but I, I think you'll be pleased to see the sort of progress we've made, and hopefully you'll see the improvement to the bottom line too.
Yeah, yeah, I, I have no question, I just, I think it's, you know, it's one thing we talked about last time, and to make sure we put it out there so that people see we are getting a good return on that investment, for sure.
Keep in mind, those positions are, really have been here for just over six months, they started in October, so, uh, they're just, both of them hit the ground running, but we're just now starting to see kind of the fruits of that.
And I think, um, from what I'm hearing, um, I mean, I, I heard from, from people who attended, um, EcoMane's presentation day, and our sustainability coordinator does an incredible job, so just even from our reputational basis, the added value has, uh, exponential given, for experience and contributions, so I'm sure that that will only increase.
Absolutely. Okay.
We go to...
Seco, all right. Um, so again, I do...
People out there that are watching, don't know what Seco is, that's the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation. And we're on, what, tab four?
Page three.
We're actually doing well on time, can you just give a very high-level overview for the public just about Seco and how it's structured?
Sure.
I think they need to understand the nonprofit status and why it's independent.
Right. So the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation has been in existence about 35 years at this point. Um, it was set up to, uh, facilitate economic development in town, and we, um, work on all levels of, uh, activity with respect to economic development. Um, we do both, everything from direct assistance to folks who may come in and want to sit down and talk to us about either starting a business or growing their business. Um, we also, um, do the marketing arm of, uh, the town, so we're out there, um, at trade shows or marketing events that are being coordinated by the state. Um, occasionally, we've, um, do travel, uh, the last couple of years, we've had a grant that helped us do a couple of other trade missions, um, so we're definitely doing both in-state and out-of-state marketing. Some of that are, is some direct advertising, um, to, uh, talk to people about how wonderful it is to do business here in Scarborough. Um, but we do do some direct assistance, um, particularly if someone comes to us and they're, uh, need a little help understanding perhaps the planning process, but they're not quite ready to, um, go to the town yet, they want to be a little more secure... to the town yet. They want to feel a little more secure about what's, what the process is. We help those folks. We will also help folks who are actually looking for a place to locate here in Scarborough, or if they're looking for to expand and go to another, another space within the, within the town. So we're a full-service organization with respect to, you know, promoting economic development in the town and promoting the town's image to those both inside and outside the town. The reason it was set up, my understanding, the reason it was set up early on as a separate corporation that was tied to the town, but separate, was to provide some confidentiality. There are occasions when folks are not quite ready to talk to the town. Either they're asking us to review a business plan, or they're talking about a concept, or they're talking about a location, but it's proprietary and they don't want that information out to anyone. So we can offer some, some confidentiality with respect to some of those discussions. And that really was the concept. And I think, you know, because we are, are outside the town hall, we tend to have a little bit more, you know, business folks who will come by, drop by to talk about what's going on. We certainly encourage people to come and see us. We have resources in the office and we're there for almost any type of service that someone needs. We're very customized in terms of helping folks find what they need and how to grow and expand here. And we certainly do, we certainly do respond when there are either out of state or out of region or even just out of Scarborough, when there's a large office or a large company looking for space. We do prepare the responses to those. So we do work with site location consultants. So in a nutshell, we're, we're a full-service organization with respect to economic development. We also pride ourselves on being, are, are putting together a broad and comprehensive data set about the town of Scarborough. That's really, we deliver a lot of our services through our website as well. So our website walks people through the different divisions that they may encounter in the town. We talk about demographics, we talk about marketing, we talk about neighborhoods. So we try to give people a complete picture of the town and we're always working to make that website richer in terms of content. And our website's a little more, we're a little, because we're focusing on data and we're focusing in on information, we can arrange it a little more quickly, a little more branding and marketing, in a branding and marketing context than perhaps the town can, because we're really focused on that, that business development piece. So our website is more of a business-to-business website. So, yes, in a nutshell, that's perhaps too much, too big of a nut, but once you start talking.
But when you look at the numbers, there's not much to talk about in the numbers. So I'm glad you gave us at least the overview.
Thank you.
You may have noticed in the press herald, the Portland Press Herald this week, South Portland is, through their budget process, is looking at funding a full-time position. Karen has consulted with them through the years, their economic development committee, and they're considering possibly doing a similar model as to Setco. So others are looking, for sure.
Right. Yarmouth set up a similar situation. They, we spent a lot of time, or Yarmouth folks spent a lot of time coming and talking to us about their development corporation. So we, we certainly do function as a model for other communities who are looking to set up this type of operation. And, you know, for the record, we are very supportive of other towns wanting to do economic development. We believe that other communities who engage in economic development help us as a region. So it helps us clarify what we're really doing. And we do feel that the different towns in Cumberland County all have a slightly different product. So I think that makes us more comfortable in terms of working together as, as a region. And I think that's going to be very important. Certainly over the next 10 years, it really is about at least understanding what the external growth possibilities are. Most of your economic development does come from expanding businesses, but we don't want to ignore the fact that it would be helpful and useful and productive to attract certain types of companies here. Certainly the smaller companies on a fast-growth track is really what we're looking at. And that's really part of our outreach to some of the, that we do in partnership with some of our surrounding communities. So on that note, I think our budget is fairly straightforward. We have a total increase of about 3.6%, about $8,000. That's all driven by wages and benefits. We have kept our operating expenses to a zero increase. And we've done that because, the way we've done that is we did increase our, our goal of raising external dollars. So we are increasing our fundraising by about 16%. That makes me a little nervous, but we, that's our goal and that's what's going to keep us at a 0% increase. And I have to thank my board of directors because they're very supportive of that. They are instrumental in helping us raise money to support the annual meeting. And that certainly is one of our, I think it's, it's our thank you to the community, to the business community, to say how valuable we think they are. And this is Scarborough's way of saying you're very important to us and we understand what you contribute, you know, to the town. And I think I'm, I am very proud of the annual meeting. I think we've taken it from, you know, a, a good annual meeting to perhaps a really participatory, exciting meeting. So I have to admit, I, I do like the fact that it's the one time of year. We get to come and get to see everybody. And I think things happen at the annual meeting by people talking to each other. And I, I just, again, very proud that we are engaging the, the business community. I think sometimes in other communities, that's, the business community isn't appreciated as much as they could be. And again, this is part of our thank you to it. And they've been very supportive and the annual meeting basically pays for itself. So, but that said, one of the things that we are going to be doing is selling some ads on our website to help raise that, a little bit of extra money. So we'll see how that experiment goes. Right now, we've been doing the ads as complimentary to our sponsors. So in the future, for next year, we're going to go ahead and do some selling for folks who just want to be in the online directory and have a little bit more presence.
My only comment closing, if I had a chance to meet with the chair of Setco, Kevin Freeman. And so I expressed with him personally, but I hope that you share with your entire board that it is greatly appreciated, that their willingness to share your expertise and services with the planning department. And I really want to say thank you to the entire board for their cooperation in that.
Excellent. Yes, they've, they've been very supportive. I think they also, they also appreciate what this, this experiment of having, you know, some in-house relationship with the planning department and working even closer. I think they're hoping to see some products out of this, like some additional reporting of, you know, growth and trends and all of that. So I think that's, they are extremely thoughtful and visionary in terms of understanding what this couple of months here in planning can do for both planning and for economic development.
So I've got a couple of questions. I'm looking through the budget drivers here and I just want to, I think I understand what's going on. And we're, it's, we're not talking major numbers here. I just want to make sure I ran it around it here.
There is one mistake in the.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, you made a correct mistake first and then I.
Sure, the, the.
My answer.
There is, I think, the original budget submitted to the town manager had an extra $2,500 towards the marketing. That was cut out. And I think that one number in the budget driver didn't get, didn't get changed when we said goodbye to our extra marketing funds.
So that brings, so that did answer the first question. Second question is, or second question is, what does South Dakota have against us?
I know. I know. It is, there's just a, you know, I think the last time we looked at the, the numbers last year, I think there were four or five states that hadn't gone to our website, but this year, just one. I, I don't have a good answer for that. I used to refer to, when we, when we looked, we pull our, we pull our, when we look at our content on the website, we pull our analytics. And we have visitors from every state in the country, except for South Dakota. And yes, I don't have a good explanation. I feel like I should give them a call.
Yeah, some card or something, say, you know, River.
Yes, exactly, exactly. We, we certainly do have, we do have some international contents and hopefully they're not all, like, just trying to sell me new website information. I, I will, I will certainly say that, that there are some that are trying to sell us product. But.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Are we going to let that stay on that line?
So, how much works? Who are you looking at, Mr. Shaw? You look at the librarian.
South, South Dakota has the, has the Sturgis Bike Rally, that's why you have, our poll wouldn't quite fit there, if I didn't.
It's that you're close, there's.
No, I'm afraid you need to open the road.
Make him uncomfortable.
You need to save me from my.
We can see under the table, you know, so if he thinks you will know what's coming.
But stab you with a pen, I'll tell you the joke about that later. Happened to a counselor once.
Sometimes I do need you to save me for myself. Well, I guess, good evening. And it seems the format has been to go through the revenues and then the operational budget and then move on to capital. So in keeping with that, page seven of.
Page three.
Page three is revenue. And a few things that would bring to your attention, our, our actual revenue is, has increased 4.1% with an increase of about $76,000. And the lion's share of that increases due to our recent venture with contracted vehicle maintenance services. And that is, it is working out quite well for us. The $161,000 that you see proposed there in the budget, that is the combination of the $90,000 in, in revenue generated from actual mechanical labor rates. And then the balance of that, 161, is the parts that we will be supplying for those repairs. Through Fresh in Memory parts are cost plus for those. And so that, that additional percentage of 15% for parts under 1,000 and 10% for those above, that helps cover the cost of procuring those parts and managing the parts room and so forth, the additional work that is entailed with that. The, the $71,000 increase or revenue there is also reflected, as we'll see later on in the operational budget, under vehicle maintenance parts. That's the increase that goes along with that. Sale of town property, if, if we're approved for our budget pieces that we're, and the capital that we're looking for, we see that we're proposing both $65,000 return on, on some property. We've had some really good luck this past year or so with a, with an online government-only bidding service that, that we've come across and have been very successful, not only disposing of our property, but other departments as well. So it's worked out well for us.
So that's not real estate, that's equipment when we say sale of property?
And then the only other two pieces that might be of interest, there's a $29,000 increase in the MDOT's Urban Rural Initiative. That's the block money that is, that is shared with us from the state. And it's an increase of $29,000. I'm confident of that number in that I talked to Pete Coughlin of the Main Local Roads and made sure that that was actually happening. And then unfortunately, on the, on the decrease, is a decrease of $14,000 through the state emergency management planning grant that we were fortunate enough to have for a number of years that Chief Thurlow secured. He also benefited from that grant, as well as a few other departments. So with that, is there any other questions in revenue you weren't happy to answer?
Just a quick question, Mike. The, the MDOT, Dave, that's, that's not PAX or anything else. Or is that PAX?
No, no, that's, that's our share, that's our share of, of gas tax money that's flowing from the state.
So it's a block grant?
Yeah, it's a block. Actually, what you used to call them, the, the, the block grant.
Okay.
Absolutely. So we'll move on to operational budget. I'm actually working off of the line item pieces in the back of your budget book.
So I turned it out, that could be valued. Page ten, there's a couple of books just near the back. Starts on page 43.
Again, I'll, I'll bring you through a few highlights of the operational budget as I see them and then we can start to talk further. Just to start off with our, my overall, the overall increase of the budget is about $112,000 or 1.7%. Working down through the divisions within the, within the department, administration is fairly unremarkable and it's increased $3,000. It's for some, a lease for our multi, multipurpose printer scanner machine that we have.
Sorry, Mike, you got a little catch-up here.
We're a little lost in this budget. There's two or three different budget details.
Page 43 is.
Forty-three. You thought you said 33 and I'm like, what?
I beg your pardon.
No, no, no. Our fault.
Good, sorry. Thanks.
And that will conclude the budget.
Thank you for your support.
So page 43 is the administrative division within the public works, one and a half percent increase. Nothing too extraordinary there. Salaries and benefit increases. There is a $3,000 increase. It's a new line that we have for the multipurpose printer that we have. But if you look up above, you see a $2,000 decrease in contracted services. So that's basically a wash.
I would just take a moment to, to mention that our longtime deputy director, Dick Collins, has announced retirement at the end of June.
Glad you clarified that, because when I read the narrative, it didn't provide detail and I was getting a little nervous where Mr. Shaw was heading.
But Dick has worked his way up through the crew, been with us 40 years?
40 years.
40 years. His institutional knowledge, you know, will fairly be lost. And he only lives just over off Broad Trend Road.
He's not going too far. We'll keep, we'll keep a close eye.
You need a plug guy.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Next page is under GIS engineering. And you see a 21.2% increase there. That is actually my third of a, of a very good find in Kerry Struth, who is the sustainability coordinator. I would certainly say that, that $19,000 there is, is well-spent and then some, as, as we'll talk later on, about a initiative to change over the streetlights to LEDs and so forth and so on. So that's that. If you look further down, special projects, the contractual services and NIPDs, which is National Pollution and Discharge Elimination Systems, which is our stormwater permit requirement, you'll note that there's a $20,000 increase in that line. And that $20,000 increase is there because with discussion with, with Tom, if you remember last year of the capital budget, I had a $25,000 BMP, Best Aisment Practice Maintenance Line, that is no longer in there. That is used for maintaining the stormwater ponds and so forth, that we have to have for, for compliance. It's an annual expense. It's an ongoing expense, so therefore it rides, it really belongs more in the operational budget than not. You know, there's, it just does. So that's, that's the, that's the change there. Moving on to page 45, this is Public Works Operations, this is kind of the stuff that most people think that is the need of what we do, and it is. What you will see in here, there's actually a decrease of seven tenths of a percent, but there are a few items in here that are worth mentioning. Contracted Services had an increase of $39,000. And that $39,000 increase is something that I want to try for the upcoming budget cycle. We have, currently, we have two street sweepers. One of the street sweepers is a 17-year-old Elgin tenant sweeper that, that company no longer is in business and has a number of proprietary parts on it. We've been real creative over the years, keeping that thing in service, and the vehicle maintenance staff came to me and just said, it's time to give it its last rites, Mike, let's park it, we parked it last fall, and that's where it's going to stay. And so we do still have a fairly frontline piece in a sweeper, in an Elgin sweeper. And so sweeping is one of those things where you have a big rush first thing in the spring, where you need to get out, get it all done, and be done with it, so that people can start enjoying the streets for the six months of summer that we have. So in discussion with Tom, my thought is, is that we can, we can probably, well, I know we can, I've looked around, the $39,000, we can rent, we can hire a sweeping company to come in with their sweeper, and in conjunction with our sweeper, we still have, we have two sweepers essentially for the first part of the season, get that first rush of sweeping out of the way. And then after that, we have a sweeper that we can use for emergency spills, which we do all the time, cleanups, maintenance sweeping, maintenance sweeping is something we have to do under our permit for stormwater in the Red Brook area and that sort of thing, so it allows us to do those sorts of things. I think it's a good idea to try that for a season, see how it works out, because a sweeper is the better part of $350,000 to buy one outright. I think the town, the town, a town of this size should have its own sweeper. Does it need two sweepers? I'm thinking maybe not, maybe this is a way to keep a good well with customer service and also save some money and be more reasonable with that. So that's, that's the rationale behind that.
Can I ask you a question about street sweeping?
Sure.
Not that I'm really, it's just kind of hit me right up. So you sweep the street because some of them want our drainage requirements. Where do you keep what you sweep in, doesn't, are we simply just transferring the same thing that we worry about getting into stormwater into a different water, a different source that kind?
No, street, street sweeping is, first off, street sweeping is not, not considered a hazardous waste. So we're able to take those street sweepings and quantify how many, how much we pick up. It actually, we're very fortunate that we have the Holmes Road Site right next to the Beechridge Speedway. And those, those materials are used either for fill cover or used for beneficial use in certain projects that we may have where we need deep fills or something like that. And it just, so it stays sequestered on that site and does not go into, go into the streams and that sort of thing.
Sorry to get too heated.
So just a quick question on the contracted services, I mean, it sounds great this year at $39,000, I mean, I'd like to keep an eye on that too, because, you know, if it's, we talked about this for public safety too, the more we contract out, it might be initial savings, but long-term, we don't have control over the rates or what's going to happen, so, you know, I'm all for, you know, looking at it as long as we kind of put an asterisk next to it, track it for maybe a couple of years and see. How, how long is the contract, and this is just one year, or?
Well, I have it budgeted for one year, but we've not, we've not entered into any formal contracts or anything like that.
Okay.
This is, this is budget pricing.
Sure.
I actually went through an analysis where we looked at what do we cost to rep like this? We did our own cost of ownership on sweepers and then also some leasing options and straight rental options and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And this was, this was in range with, and actually probably $20 or $30 less than what it was costing us to own and operate our own. Sweepers are just one of those things where they destroy themselves from the first day you bring them on, 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 you know.
Yeah, I just don't want to be in a position like, you know, where we get obligated to a contractor or vendor, and then all of a sudden our rates double or whatever in a year, and we can't.
No, we're not signing long-term contracts, we're doing like weekly contracts, you know, or even daily, frankly, as needed. And I'm, I'll accept, I guess, responsibility for this, I was really blown over by the sticker shock of the cost of, just the upfront capital costs. And then to operate it, as Mike says, from day one, they tear themselves apart. The brushes wear down, and then there's just constant maintenance headaches. So I think long-term, this is a far more cost-effective solution for us. And I should have to think what you'd be looking at in the capital budget with an additional $350,000 request.
Well, again, understood, but if it's something, if it's a need, and we budget it accordingly, so we know in three to five, or whatever it is, that that's going to be a capital, we can plan for that a little bit better.
I think we'll always need to have one.
Right.
The question is, did we need two? And that's really, that's really the issue.
You know, going down through, there's a next line item down, winter salt, that's a $10,000 increase. I really wish I had a crystal ball for figuring out how to, how to truly budget for salt and know what the weather was going to be. But this is, that, that number represents what we figured the unit cost of salt is going to be on the next bid with the tonnage that we typically have used over the last five years. That's kind of how we got, arrived at that. ID's in Florida, and we're starting to get a little bit better handle on that, and we realized we could drop that, discount that by about $9,400. And then I guess I'll also mention lastly, the asphalt paving, I've actually decreased that by $450,000, excuse me, $42,000. That's a reflection of trying to, trying to meet some, meet some requirements with my overall budget increase and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I would also just note on this page, and you'll see it elsewhere, but I don't know how many staff are included in the operations line, but you'll note 17 are included here. Full-time staff is down, pension is down, but insurance is up. That's really a reflection of a changing workforce. We had a 50-year employee retire, a 35-year employee retire, and we're hiring, you know, newer people with, younger, with families, and they don't have, sort of, they're not commanding the same salary, and therefore the pension costs aren't as great. Jaclyn Mandrick, our HR Director, has arranged some intergenerational conversations, because the workplace is changing right before our eyes, and public works is, you really see it upfront.
And by the way, that's some really great hires, some people that we've brought on are going to be wonderful, long-term employees that are going to contribute greatly to the, to the organization and to the town, so we're very excited about that.
And not, not to expedite your process at all, but we talked about a succession plan as well, is that in the past, is that something we still have a challenge with?
Well, I mean, obviously with Deputy Director leaving, I mean, we have, we have a key role there that we're going to, we're going to need to fill, and we'll be looking internally and externally on that. We've got, like I said, the folks we've hired over the last few years have got tremendous talent and ability, so we have certainly some more junior supervisory positions that are, when those become available, we will have people that we can plug in, and so we're very, I'm very enthusiastic and optimistic about that part of public works.
That means you can't retire for 10 years, you know?
I wish I could retire in 10 years.
So, so Mike, just a couple of things on the paving. Is that, is that just maintenance paving kind of thing, or resurfacing type stuff, or are we, are we going to get behind where we're going to now start having more complaints about road conditions, or?
No, I mean, the, this is the maintenance paving and the small items. The mid-level paving and the CIP is the one that is, the road reclamation and the heavier overlays and that sort of thing. I think we're, I think we're going to be all set with this. Yeah, I don't see, I don't see a problem with it.
Michael, listen to it, and I don't think I mentioned to you, before you saw my proposed budget, I made a final correction, it was a $200,000 reduction, and I portioned that out kind of by, fortunately by percentage of total budget. Mike elected to hit that paving account fairly hard to meet that requirement. That was his priority, we talked about it. But desperate times sometimes require desperate measures.
Yeah, I just don't want to trade one problem for another and, you know, have people.
Right, answer to that.
That phone doesn't necessarily stop ringing.
Amen.
Oh, we're on the other end of the table. Page 46, those are just cemetery items, memorial accounts, shade trees, nothing, nothing extraordinary there, just some minor adjustments, they're small, small ticket items anyway, other than the contracted mowing services that we have with the sanitaries. And beyond that, there's nothing too, too much to note there. And page 47, page 47 is the vehicle maintenance, vehicle maintenance department division that we have. And you'll note that there's a small percentage change in full-time pay. Nothing, nothing extraordinary there. Parts and services, I mentioned earlier, that is a 74,000 to 3,000 is an extra parts, parts cost from some of the other, the other departments. The $74,000 increase though, that is the, has offsetting revenue to it. So we have a total increase in vehicle maintenance division alone of 2.1%. Yes, the gas, $52,000 decrease, I mean, those are, that's, that's an indication of fewer miles driven, more, more fuel-efficient vehicles. If you like Karen, buy her leaf, that'll, that'll continue to go in that direction. And that sort of thing.
You're going to have electric plow trucks next?
Talk a little range anxiety, I want to get one of those things back to the house. Streetlights, an interesting point we'll talk about this earlier, later on in capital, is you see a $185,000 cost for, for streetlights, rental end electricity. That is a fair number that we can change here later on in the budget. Minor increase in new equipment, excuse me, page 48, minor increase in new equipment for the electrical department, and that is actually traffic signals. A lot of the traffic signals have been upgraded, but there are some, I think specifically of the main med campus, that is not likely to, is not likely to have any other sort of development, that's going to allow for other sources of funding from private enterprise to upgrade those. That particular intersection is in really bad shape, Skyward Downs intersection, for instance, that one we'll let go and keep maintained because of potential future changes there, those sorts of things. But we do need to do some traffic signal upgrades and updates, and so that's, that's an attempt to do some of those. And we can do most of those in-house, we've been spending some time doing some training with one of our employees to get their certifications to do those.
So what is that in film, is that just equipment swapouts for more efficient lights, or is that?
It is.
Programming and programming and, you know.
All of that, all of that stuff comes with it, so when you put the new traffic heads up, when you put new back shading on, we've done a few things over the last few years, like, I don't know, we just drive up the Route 1 corner and some of the other ones, if you ever notice the sunshades, half of them were busted out, and they were broken up, and they just kind of looked ratty, we replaced some of those. Some new signal heads, the wiring and that sort of thing, especially over main med, is going to need to be addressed here in the very near future. And then, where to next? Solid Waste on page 49, brings us to the last of the operational budget. About a $20,000 increase in the eco-main tipping fee, that is not because the tipping fee is increasing, but it's because of people's habits of disposal. Honestly, probably a, probably a little bit of, everybody's seeing an uptick in solid waste with the economy getting better, or people feeling better about it, I guess, or something else.
Though we were, just today, we, we launched, or early next month, we'll launch the food waste pilot, it's only 200 homes, and so we do have some original collection. There could be significant savings in the future if we're able to roll that out townwide. It's projected in as much as 30% of weight of solid waste is actually compostable. So there's a way we can get that out of our waste stream, because we're paying by the ton. It would be big savings to the bottom line, but we're certainly not in any position to book any savings now. We need some time to understand this better.
So I guess that brings us down to the bottom line, which I mentioned earlier, which was a 1.7% increase and $112,000 loss. Any questions for other on the operational budget, we'd be happy to find them.
Just for those at home, it's a, it's a $6.8 million budget that we're talking about, so it's, I give Michael a lot of credit for coming in where he is.
And that leads us to capital projects and capital equipment. Any purpose which one first, Tom? Capital, page four. Capital equipment, capital equipment, just a general overview of how I approach capital equipment and the funding on that. As you know, public works by its nature is very equipment-intensive, and so we try to normalize that annual cost. And by doing, to do that, we replace one of our 15, one of our 15 plow trucks on an annual basis, or we like to. We replace one of our 10 light vehicles, which is a one-ton low on an annual basis. And so the purpose behind that is annualize the cost, but also we have, we have found, and I've seen it myself in 20 years I've been here, when you have a situation where you, where you defer, sooner or later you have to take and purchase and replace these vehicles, and then you get into cluster buying, so you buy two or three or four plow trucks. The downside to that is when you buy two or three or four vehicles, all vehicles have their own flaws. And so instead of having one vehicle with a particular flaw, you have four vehicles with that same flaw, and you have to live with it for, you know, in our instance, these, these plow trucks are in the 16th and 17th year when they're getting turned out. The 17 years of misery depending on if you get a really bad batch. So that's another reason for, for not cluster buying, and the same with pickup trucks. So we have a 10-wheel dump truck that we're looking to replace this year for a cost of $205,000. And that is the truck and gear only, we reuse the standard hoppers that we have in, slide-in hoppers for standing and salping. Those are stainless steel, and what we will do with those, when we, when we pull it out, we will go through, go through it thoroughly, replace bearings, drives, and that sort of thing, but the box itself, which is really all it is, is something that can be reused throughout the cycle of the vehicle. And then the pickup truck is just that, it's a, it's a three-quarter ton crew truck. We have a, we have two crew trucks, we typically on a, on a regular basis have two crews doing excavation-type work throughout the summer, and those are equipped with the appropriate hand tools, safety equipment, and that sort of thing, so it's a, it's a piece that gets used on a regular basis. You'll also note, I have two other, actually three other items in there.
Mike, could I just stop you there?
Yeah.
Mike's been doing some really interesting analysis that we'll, we need to refine a bit further before we share, but it really intends to look, it's actually taking every piece of this equipment and attributing the annual maintenance cost with it to the penny as close as we can. So we can really get a sense of when vehicles are starting to cost us. And I think the other piece that I want to suggest you look at, the depreciation, kind of the resale value, because obviously that would decrease over time, that's, could be factors in that calculation. And what I really want to do is validate that our, our schedules are on track, and maybe we can recalibrate them up or down depending on what we find, but we'd be pleased to share that data with you when we have it refined.
It is pretty neat, right now, we're replacing on, by the, by the old vehicle essentially. But we're getting to the point now with our city work software that we can actually quantify cost per mile to operate these vehicles. It's pretty exciting stuff, and we'll really work on it. Steve Buckley, who is our GIS personnel, so our data specialist, is working on that for me. Heavy truck lifts. We currently have a set of heavy truck lifts, and these are just what they say they are, they're lifts that will pick up the fire truck, the dump truck, or anything like that. They're a huge, they make, they make working on these vehicles much more efficient. I would also suggest that they're, they probably save on vehicle tech's bodies, because instead of getting on and off creepers and dragging themselves underneath, they can stand under them and work on the vehicle in a, in a more comfortable fashion. We, we have, we have a foot race up to the lifts every morning to see who's going to grab them for their, for their day, because we usually have as many as two or three heavy trucks working on them in the course of the day at the same time. This is another set of lifts that would allow. This is another set of lifts that would allow us to be able to work another truck at the same time, and, you know, this is one of the outcomes of, I think we're seeing more demand on these lifts with Old Orchard and Westbrook, excuse me, and Wells and Bar Mills coming in and being worked on, and so I think it would be a good expenditure, and they're a long-lasting piece, so they certainly fit into the capital budget, and they'd be an appropriation. The other piece I have, I have a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrade. In this current year, I have eighty-two thousand dollars, and I'm asking for another eighty-two thousand dollars. The heating and air conditioning system, the ventilation system at Public Works, in the admin area came with the building, so it's thirty-five years old, but what a lot of this money would go towards is replacing the heating system that is in the bays, it's got a forced air system that really isn't efficient, I know that the fire department's found great efficiencies with the infrared heating system that they have in their firehouses now, in their bays, and that's what I would like to move towards, so.
Fascinating, that infrared technology doesn't heat the space, it heats the item, and there's a radiant component to that, but that's essentially how it works, and it's far more energy-efficient at the same time, particularly in areas where you have great heat loss, when they open that garage bay door, everything's in there, all the heat escapes very, very quickly before you can close it again, so infrared is really the way to go, particularly in these bays.
As crazy as it is, the piping system that we have has a type of joint in it that if you cool them down, they shrink and they leak, so we leave the heat on in the summertime so that we can circulate warm water to them so we keep those swells, it's just a bad design. So, that's the purpose behind the HVAC. And then, in the equipment line, the only other thing I have for this year is thirty-five thousand dollars, and for a traffic camera system, span wire traffic camera upgrade at the intersection of Gorm Road and Payne, we've got a lot of failing traffic loops in that intersection, and there's a lot of lanes there, and so rather than replace loops, which, when you have that many loops to replace, can be quite expensive, there is a new technology, traffic cameras typically don't work well on wires, because wires bounce up and down and you don't get a good view, so that's why they go mostly on mast arms, there's a new technology out there that kind of, it's almost like a gimbal, and so it works a lot better on those wires, so we feel that that would be a great intersection to try that new technology and see how it works for us. It's been around for a couple of years, it's not like it's the first time it's ever been done, so that's the purpose behind that.
And we're proposing to fund that with reserves, there are traffic impact fee accounts that are appropriate for this purpose.
So that's capital equipment, unless there are any questions on that.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. The HVAC upgrade, you get phase two, is there any other phases, or is this the final phase?
That's it.
That's it. And then, I'm gonna put my annual plug-in with the town manager, that I think all municipal vehicles should have the same kind of numbering system as Public Works, so that...
I believe, Mike, would you like to address that?
We're working on that, as they come in, as they come in for, Tom actually tasked me with that after last budget cycle, and so, any vehicle that has an actual municipal plate, obviously, there are vehicles that do not have municipal plates, it would not be a good idea to have numbers on them for obvious reasons, but for instance, you know, any vehicle, mine included, the one that I operate, has got numbering system on it, because vehicles are coming in and being serviced from other divisions and so forth, they are, and I've made sure of it all, our standards.
Mike, how far along are we through this lead at this point?
I would say a two-thirds of the way through at this point.
Rather than pulling off the vehicle as they contend in their regular maintenance cycle, we're lettering them?
Yeah, it was more public service announcement kind of thing, was people would say, oh, look at the bright shiny new truck, and you could say, well, look at that second number there or the first number, that's actually the year it was...
Good conversation, Tom.
Yeah.
It really is, yeah, absolutely. And then, the one that's near and dear to everybody's heart, capital projects, page seven.
Page seven.
We've got a couple of really, really exciting projects here, or at least I find them exciting, it's need to comment on what I find exciting in my media life, but mid-level road rehabilitation, that is one that you've seen for a number of years, and that is the projects that are the more in-depth road reconstruction projects that are done in-house, that are not contracted, so those are the more rural roads, the roads that don't have subsurface drainage issues and so forth, there'll be reclamation for pavement milling, we're actually at a point now where we're able to do pavement milling as opposed to full-depth reclamation, which is an indication that we're kinda getting a handle on a lot of our paving issues and that sort of thing, so pleased about that.
So, I was at PAX today, and an interesting thing came up, and I don't know how we do this, but they were talking about scheduling road maintenance around utility infrastructure projects, like water, gas, or, do we have a program like that, or how do we, how does that work? I know every town different, and, you know, do they, do they give them our budget, or how?
We've been doing, we've been doing that for years, Chris, and the way that we do that is, we're always keeping in contact with the utilities, so we know ahead of time if they've got some projects that they've gotta do, but really where it benefits us is that when we have a project that we're looking to do, we always reach out to them, make sure that they are aware of that, and they go into, and they work with us. Plumb Hill Road's an example where, when we were rebuilding that road, we were also, the same contractor, not at our cost, was replacing the water main, and so, you know, those are examples of what we've done, done in a number of the projects, but we're, the last thing we ever wanna do with either myself as Public Works or a utility is to go in and build a road only to have it opened up within a year or two, because there was not that communication. So, oftentimes, we'll, a utility will piggyback on with us, although there is some additional contract management and that sort of thing, and what I've done in the past, I've assessed a percentage of the contract as a fee for handling those sorts of things, so there's a number of different ways to handle that as well.
But overall, the project, I mean, ends up being a cost saver, really, because you're getting, well, it's been a cost saver, but you're getting more efficiency out of that process?
Absolutely, getting more efficiency out of the process, and the pain is happening once instead of numerous times. One of the projects I'm very pleased about is a, we've already, we're already in the first phase of it, and we're being funded, and actually it's gonna be done the end of May, is this subsurface drainage assessment project. We have over seventy miles of subsurface drainage in town, and a lot of that drainage is getting to the age where it is, getting to the end of its useful life, corrugated metal pipe has thirty-year lifespan, we certainly have a bunch of subdivisions that are at that age and beyond, and so what we're attempting to do with this assessment is to go out there, we camera all the lines, we have, then we have an asset management, an asset database of that, because it's a very expensive system that we have underground, and we can also then take a step back, look at what we have, look at the issues, and create a thoughtful capital improvement rehabilitation project. There's new techniques out there for rehabilitating pipe systems that don't require complete replacement, open digging and that sort of thing, much less expensive, much less interruption to the traveling public and that sort of thing, so we're in the first phase of that right now, and I actually just had a progress meeting today with Ted, the Ted Barry Company, who is the selected contractor, and it's pretty neat stuff, that is scheduled to go on for three more years, and we'll be able to create, like I said, this, we have a lot of cost of failure, the consequence of failure, what happens, it's graded, it's based on environmental factors, it's based on depth of pipe, it's a very, very good system, and it's a system that's used throughout the United States to be able to make these sorts of decisions. The next one down is, you've seen planning money requested for the Gorm Road reconstruction, here it is, this is the first phase, Wentworth to Maple Avenue, you see a price tag of two point two million, that's the full cost, but there is, the actual anticipated net cost for us, for the town, is a million five, because we've identified, and I have agreements with the DOT and PAX for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding to offset some of that cost, and we would like to get going on that the spring of 2018. In the meantime, you know, to your point, we do have some utilities that have to go on the road, the gas main replacement is one of them, hopefully that's gonna happen this year, because that's a big undertaking, so get those utilities in, and then go after the road, if it gets one.
So, just a quick question for the manager, so it's two point two on here, but we're really looking at one point five, so how do we reconcile that to this bottom line here? Because the bottom line's gonna be the request, right?
It's a revenue offset.
Revenue offset. And that's, we'll see that, that's in this revenue offset, yes, this budget? Okay.
And one more project, that's the LED streetlight retrofit project, and that is a seven hundred thousand dollar expense, but that project has a return on investment in four and a half years, that's the conversion, and town taking over ownership of LED streetlights. So, this is savings on electricity and cost, and better quality lighting, and it's a really exciting project.
There is an exhibit in tab nine, page four, it's exhibit two A, that provides a summary of this project, this project, our senior development coordinator has taken the lead on it, really since the first day it started, and it's been vetted through the Energy Committee, and it's a part of that conversation. The narrative in the CIP is a bit different in terms of the return on investment, I believe the exhibit is more accurate, and has a projected return of seven point four years. Essentially, there'll be annual savings of about ninety-five thousand dollars, so we'll recoup that in just over seven years.
Yeah, we talked about this before too, Tom, I think, the maintenance, are we gonna have to assume maintenance for these things now, or is that...
There are options, we could contract with a private independent party, approved by CMP, we could, CMP offers that themselves, Mike is, I think we're uniquely in the position of having equipment already, bucket truck and skilled labor to actually do that, the beauty of this technology is that they really don't require much maintenance, so at most, it'd be all-new infrastructure, essentially, we're looking at switching out layouts, but those will run a very long time, so we expect in the near term, there's little or no maintenance required.
So, we have qualified staff who could do that, if we choose to pursue it that way?
Yep, we actually do, we have, we have staff that have international municipal, local infacertification for streetlights as well as traffic lights, so, yeah.
We already have the investment in the bucket truck, which is an essential piece.
And we talked about putting other potential infrastructure on these things, or, you know, whether it's cameras or other devices or something, are we still looking at that, or exploring that, or?
This proposal does not include anything else, this is just for relamping its new fixtures and bulbs, obviously.
Luckily, it does have, they do have seven pin dust-to-dawn connectors, so those will, it's geared up for that in the future, all the way through, so it's a thought.
I'll just throw a shout-out to Mike and his staff, to save some money, they're, we are working with a consultant to help us kinda navigate this, it's fairly complicated, highly technical, but one of the most important things is to have a good sound inventory, and many places, many communities rely on a consultant to go out there physically, GPS, all these locations, Mike and his crew have done all that, so we've got a very solid inventory in-house, location, type of fixture, you know, you name it, it has all the attributes in it along with it, so that saved us some money and really sped this project along.
Is there money in that seven oh one for the consultant to do the evaluation piece or something, as we, I remember in Energy, we talked about the type of light, the lighting locations, you know, do we just go through and rip up, you know, replace everything we have, do we do a needs assessment or evaluation or something to see, could we...
Yes, I believe this cost is all in, including consulting help, and part of that consulting effort would be an evaluation of where and how many, and what intensity light do we need.
So, the only other, last question I had is, and it came up last night at regular council, was the DEP fuel station, has that been taken out, or is that gonna be in a different...
We're gonna talk about that, I think.
Yeah, that's in the current FY seventeen budget.
Okay.
So, that's a project that, you know, Mike is certainly, near and dear to him, he's overseeing that project, one of the challenges of that project is that we've selected a consultant, a contractor, and that project is due to commence first week of May, so we need to get some direction sooner than later, if we could.
Yeah, but I just didn't see it on the, on the project plan.
Because it was in last year.
No, it's already funded.
That's currently funded, and it won't, that's the last...
Well, it's currently approved. Currently approved, through the budget, it has budget authority, budget approval.
But we're gonna talk about it after.
Thanks, again, and I still, you know, I haven't...
It's in operation.
It is, I haven't seen any, certainly haven't seen any decrease in services, or I haven't heard any complaints, other than the usual.
Yeah, well... You're flying with too much snow at the end of my driveway. I could surf all the, we had that much snow.
So, you're the one that gets all those calls. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is general budget discussion, really, although the council today, who's chair of this committee, is not aware of this yet, but as far as, no, you're afraid that, I think he's aware that we had intention to send the bond question that was before the council last night back to the finance committee for review, I don't believe he's aware yet of the issue regarding the DEP tank replacement, or this conversation, so when he does get back to town on Friday, that we'll definitely have that conversation, but I did ask Tom to, and staff, to take a look at that list, to begin the prioritization process for them, but then also provide us an update regarding that project, and then also the charter language, to focus on both the approval process, but then also the clearing of emergency issue and seeking some type of advice, so, Tom, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Couple of things you have about the X-Is history, I have a copy of that.
Oh, thank you.
Also, there is, on the planning capital for the lease, the planning department received fifty-five thousand dollars for a trade-in in this year, and Dan's plan was to use those revenues to offset part of that purchase for next year, so that's what the mix was, so seventy-five hundred was to be appropriated, five thousand essentially now is gonna be coming from current year revenue to offset the other.
Thank you. So, distributing three different things.
I might suggest we look at this form first, if we could. This will be, hopefully somewhat familiar to you, it's a slightly different form, but it contains much of the information on the bond order that you approved last night in first reading, the first column is in fact what you approved last evening, and you'll notice the shaded area is that fuel station replacement. One of the tasks that you gave me last night was for Ruth and I to spend some time to look back through these and see what is necessary, what we must move forward, what we might be able to put on hold, and so there's some note column, look at the note column on the far right, that explains kinda the status of each of these, so the reimbursed general fund, essentially, we have already purchased these items, and the bond proceeds would actually just be reimbursing us. The other ones are fairly self-explanatory, that they're eminent, there's several plans. There were a number of projects that were taken off, notably in the second category, the Cummings Road reconstruction, that we would propose that could come off that bond order and not be bonded.
We're waiting on some information from some department on that, so what we're doing is, the total project cost was initially budgeted at four hundred and ninety-five thousand, we've already bonded almost half of that, two hundred and forty-five thousand... almost half of that, 245,000. So we still have those funds to use up before we do this, this piece is needed. So that's why we decided to hold off on that.
And then on the flip side, the school projects for the current year, there's furnishings replacement and renewal. Kate Bolton has advised that that could be removed as well.
What was that?
Furnishings.
Oh, I see.
And so there's a modest decrease down from 4 million. We'd be looking to bond to 3.63.
So the bond order would be the 3,850,000 and then we would actually go up to bond on the 3,630,000.
So I guess I got a question. I don't want to see, I need to understand the cash flow of this, I guess, in some way. So before the town council approves the purchase of something, staff can go out and purchase it using cash and then come back to us asking to then finance it?
Technically, the way it really should work is at the time we do the budget and we authorize the expenditure, the ability to expend the funds, our bond council has recommended that at that point in time, we also authorize the funding for it. Unfortunately, budget is such a huge process that the bonding piece tends to lag.
Lag a little.
Yeah, it kind of gets pushed to the side. And the second reason we tend to wait is we could, you know, we could, we could have done a bond order for the Cummings Road for the full 495,000, for example, and maybe we only needed the 250,000. So at that point, we would have to come back and essentially ask council to deauthorize the bond order. And that's not necessarily an issue, but, you know.
Yeah, because we've done, I know both of us on the school board, but even, even on the council, we, I mean, there were some items that we'd set out there for 10 years and never get, for whatever, for priority purposes, never was funded or never was undertaken, a project was undertaken or something wasn't bought. And we did a big cleanup several years ago, remember? I think we had at least a commitment, I don't know if a policy, to really make sure nothing goes beyond five years because then obviously it's not a priority if it's gone five years without actually being undertaken. So I get that.
For the items that we intend to reimburse ourselves, we do file a declaration of intent. So there's paperwork up front that expresses that intent and it enables us to do it kind of after the fact, if you will. Not after the fact, after the item is completely de-er purchased.
And IRS rules say that we can't reimburse ourselves if we do not have that. So we have that, I have that up in the notes. If I do it July 1st, for every item, I'm supposed to respond.
So back to, well, I should say, the other secondary question I did.
So I'd like to ask more questions about this before I get complicated with analysis on a bigger scale. My initial, I've already made a comment, Chris, if you want to go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
So first of all, I want to say thank you because obviously you've been able to take a look at, look at the items and put a better assessment. It's not a huge change, but it is a change. So just on the municipal side, it was originally 2.9 million. It's now 2.7 million. And on the school side, it was originally 1.3 million. It's now down to about 1.2 and I'm rounding, I'm rounding up. So I appreciate that effort. And actually, the other, the secondary question I have is that, so the amount to be bonded will be 3.6 million now instead of 4.2. The question I have is that why is then the order is that the bond is not to exceed 3.85, which was the basically, before the adjustment. So why, why would they not equal?
Normally what we do is there's, the first phase of how we know, how we're doing it in Scarborough is we have the budget that's approved. And then, but we don't have the funding for it for bonds. So then the second step is to create the authorization to fund it, which is the bond order, which is the 3,850,000. The third piece is to actually go out and bond. And in some respects, we may not need to bond the full amount. And for example, the Eastern Trail, we're, we're asking for the authority to bond, which is the bond order. However, we are not prepared to bond it yet because we're still looking for funding. So our goal is to try and get as much funding in as possible. And then, you know, so maybe by next year, hopefully next year, maybe not the year after that, we'll be able to come back to, you know, go through the funding and actually bond these.
So the only, the only difference, Sean, between the amount of bond order and the amount we intend to bond next month is the Cummings Roads project and the Eastern Trail project. So we're, yes, we're seeking authorization to bond these projects, but they're not included in this next bond issue. I suppose you could argue, well, come back to us next year with your next bond order.
We bond twice a year, right?
We bond once a year.
Oh, once a year. So, so, so there's two pieces to that. So one is about the Eastern Trail. And by the way, I am 100% supportive of the Eastern Trail. But the Eastern Trail itself and the organization and the gases aren't being filled. So they're really not even in a position to move forward yet. So why couldn't we wait a year and bond it later?
Well, we are, we're not going to bond it now. But I mean, we could take it out of the bond order.
I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the adjusted bond order.
You're looking, you'd be looking at the amount to bond.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So right, so we wouldn't bond it right now.
Okay, all right. Yeah, sorry, I was looking at the wrong column.
But following that logic, we could wait even on the bond authorization, remove it entirely from the bond order and come back to you this time next year.
One of the problems we have.
Then, then the two balances equal.
Correct.
Okay, that's all, so, okay.
The other issue with, with waiting is that just as we have some of these, the next grouping down here says prior municipal capital authorization. It, some of these are more than a year old and we're just getting, so it kind of muddies the water a little bit. If we can do the bond orders for the current year projects, then, then we have them and we know what we need to do.
It really reduces the need to come, the backlog of projects, if you will.
So, so what would happen for a situation, I'm trying to, yeah. So what will happen, let's say in a situation, the senior recreation area, you haven't broken ground on that yet, right, I assume?
No.
So if we choose to remove that, or, or I almost say remove that, if we choose not to bond that this year, but push that bonding off one year, what does that do to the project? Are there penalties? Have we already got consultants or is that, I mean, other than inconvenience?
You're going to have some angry seniors, that's the concept.
Right.
Raise their taxes, just don't anger them.
Yeah, either way, we're going to have angry seniors one way or another, right. So I mean, I'm just saying as an example, I'm not saying that we're going to do something like that, but what, you know, is that, are there unforeseen consequences for doing something like that?
No, that's a project where I'm not sure, is there a declaration of intent there?
I believe there is.
So I suppose we could fund it by cash and reimburse ourselves next year.
So what's this declaration of intent? I mean, this is an internal, it'd be a project within ourselves.
Either IRS or SEC, it's one of those acronyms that require us, in order for us to reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds, we have to declare it upfront. So if we had come to you, I think we did this with the fire truck, the ladder truck, it was during an off part because the vehicle needed to be replaced. And so I had to do a separate declaration of intent that we were going to perhaps expend those funds ourselves and then reimburse ourselves. So otherwise, by law, we can't reimburse ourselves. So we could spend all this money. If we don't have those in place for folks to take a look at, then technically we couldn't reimburse ourselves. And we couldn't bond those funds. So we could essentially bring it out of our general fund.
So if your question is if that project for, just for example, if you wish to push it off a year, we would simply not do construction, not incur the expense until some point in the future. That's one option. Consequences, perhaps angry, upset citizens. The other option would be for us not to include it in secure bond funding now, yet go ahead with the project, which would mean we'd need to find another interim source of finance such as cash on hand. And that's not limitless, obviously. And then reimburse ourselves with future bond proceeds.
And then the ones that say, you know, we're reimbursing ourselves, we've already spent those funds or if it's work in progress, then there have been some expenditures already or contracts in place.
I think it's because I need a cup of coffee, but so can you, I'm still not following this declaration piece. Because, so in the plow truck and the loader, we've already spent our own cash and now we're going and asking for financing to reimburse ourselves. When did we declare that we were going to bond it in order to spend it out of the cash to then reimburse ourselves?
Last July.
Essentially, after the budget's approved, I go through.
So the budget approval is the declaration?
No, at, at June 30th, once the budget's been passed and approved, in July, I'll go through the capital budget and anything that ever be on it. I go in, there's a form that the bond council has prepared for us and I fill in the blanks essentially. I attach a copy of the CIP budgets that say, you know, CV attached, these are the ones that we're including, that we anticipate that we might have to reimburse ourselves. I mean, we might not also because we might wait and actually use the proceeds of the bond.
Oh, I get it. Yeah, sorry, I was a little slow.
It's really a timing issue. I can assure you right now, Mike Shaw has the specifications ready to go for the truck that you just talked about in his budget. And so typically, that will hit the street first of July. And so we're awarding a contract late July and there's probably a six-month lead time. So it's really, it's a function of kind of the cycle of these sorts of things. You don't buy them off the lot.
So, so what happens if we do not reimburse ourselves? That comes out of general fund?
Fund balance.
Fund balance. Okay.
Right.
And, and, you know, we could actually do the bond orders at the time we're doing the, the budget if you wanted to do that. I mean, we could do it as a separate.
But it seems cumbersome. Would we want to, do we get benefits from packaging all these together at one, in one time?
Yeah, we could have a bond order that sits and we could go buy the bonds at a later date. We tend to do them back to back.
Yeah.
So other two.
Yeah. So the second handout is to Counselor Baylin's question. I think your question was something to the effect that you were looking at three years. We actually have drawn 10 here. Forgive us for that. I guess the impact of this borrowing on debt service. And this assumes that's $4 million. So it's slightly higher than the amounts we're just talking about. But we're reflecting both principal and interest and then combined. So you'll note, and this just takes into account that this $4 million borrowing, it doesn't consider additional borrowing in the out years beyond that. But you'll see the sort of effect it has on both principal and interest. Combined, we will reduce our debt load in that 10-year period, even including this 10, this $4 million by nearly 75 million.
But that's assuming no additional bonding moving forward, correct?
Right. We could certainly create a model that does that. But we're trying to answer his question, his question of last night, which was what is the effect of this borrowing, I think, over the next three years? So you see essentially, it would produce $380,000 in principal expense. Is that right? Principal expense.
So 380,000 is assuming that we had borrowed $4 million.
Yeah, I get that.
Yep. And 80, $90,000 interest expense.
So over 10, 10 years, I mean, over 10 years, we'll have repaid $2.8 million in principal.
Against that 4 million.
But then an additional $582,000 in interest.
Yes, against that 4 million dollar borrowing.
Yes.
But we've folded that into the overall existing debt as well to see, so you can see how that works.
If this were the amount we were actually going to bond and we were going to have the first payment in 2018, we would need to be adding roughly about $460,000 to the 2018 budget.
Yes, yes, I get that. Yeah, 470, sorry, sorry.
The 380,000.
Plus 80,000.
Right.
Okay.
So that will, the person, the financial advisor, so I don't know, helps us do the debt schedule. And he was out today. So I'm hoping I'll have those, I think, tomorrow Monday.
If I could say something before we get into kind of leg leads around the one particular project. And, you know, I want to also have a conversation with Peter just to kind of hear his take on this as well, to have a full committee. Other than a couple of very small issues within the bond order, I don't see the, at least where I was going with this, I don't see the impact of what I was looking for in the existing bond order that we're being asked to approve, other than the issue around the DEP piece. However, I refocus the attention on future bond orders because those are future projects that have not been funded, they have not been declared, they have, nothing has been done that will impact that service at least in the next couple of years where we're also going to be focusing our attention on because there's very little you can do based upon the transactional kind of nature of these and the state of those. So I'm kind of redirecting my attention now to not this current bond question. It's really going to be about the new bonds that we're asked, being asked to because it impacts that service in the future. Because we're not going to, the, even if you take out, you know, two or three, that it might be pet projects that we don't have to start, you're talking about less than $300,000 in debt that have, that haven't been started, that, you know, have very, very little impact in the debt structure for debt service payments.
Yeah, I just, I think, looking at the bigger picture.
Yeah.
If we've got, if we've got to bridge a gap this year.
We're not going to be bridging it through the bond that's been approved.
No, 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 no. I'm not suggesting it at all, but it's one mechanism of many that we have at our disposal to try and, I mean, if we, if we, you know, debt by a thousand cuts, right? And if it's, it may not be the silver bullet that we're looking for, but if it's something and it can contribute to the, to the bottom line this year, I think we need to look at that. I'm not saying that we do it. I'm just saying it's got to, I think it's got to contribute to that conversation. You know what I mean? I mean, I know it's only, I mean, if we've got our short haul the share of 2.4 or whatever it is, or our gap or whatever it is, you know, 300,000 could help, right? I think.
Maybe.
Maybe. Worth having a discussion. So, yeah, I have to wait for Peter to get back and certainly take a look with him. When, when do we, do we have a drop dead decision time for this?
Because we'll come back to you second reading on May 3rd.
Okay. So by May 3rd, we should.
And he said work begins May 3rd, or first week of May.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 I'm, I'm already jumped in. Okay. Yeah, no, no.
Right. So we do, we have to take it, make sure we split on the next, I think, do we have plans?
Yeah, we'll, I'll talk to Peter, make sure this will be on your next agenda as well.
There's a time schedule for this bond issue. So there, we do have some.
That's, that's a restriction that we have, we're running up against, is the bond issue is required.
Right. And, and I do apologize. Normally, we start this process in like the end of January, beginning of February. We actually didn't even start this until April. So we were, we were kind of behind the eight ball on that.
And I held it back. Ruth wanted to bring it forward the night I proposed the budget and I thought there was enough on that agenda. So we lost two weeks in that regard as well.
I'm foreseeing, we should be able to do a budget in the morning.
Oh, I agree. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So with respect to the one project, the fuel station replacement, which was the subject of conversation last evening, and again, this is a conversation I think Counselor Hayes ought to be involved with as well. I have had initial conversation with the town attorney and I do expect to have some guidance, a letter or memo from him for your benefit. Essentially, if you look at the town charter, and that's the issue that we're kind of confronted with, as I mentioned last night, but I did provide a copy of relevant sections of charter and that's section 907. And essentially, that requirement, certain items require voter approval. And the simple test is anything above 40,000 requires voter approval. But the charter goes on to provide a number of exclusions, and I'll just take the time to read them. One, the refunding of any securities or other obligations does not require voter approval. Two, the issuance of GO securities or other direct or indirect obligations of the town for streets, sidewalks, or storm, or sanitary sewers, or other public utilities. And the third category is any construction or financing of improvements or equipment needed as a result of fire, flood, disaster, or other declared emergency. It goes on to say, and that's the same section, for purposes of this section, the town council may vote by five of its members to adopt emergency orders or resolves authorizing construction or financing of improvements or equipment needed as a result of fire, disaster, or other emergencies. As such, orders or resolves shall contain a section in which the emergency is set forth and defined, provided however, the declaration of such emergency by the town council shall be conclusive. Interestingly, the only other reference of emergency in the town charter is found in the emergency ordinances and it adopts the same language. Initial communication with the town attorney, he did observe, and I think you'll see it in his guidance memo, had this section stopped at the end of, or declared emergency, I think that would be quite confining to you. But it clearly contemplates, in my interpretation, that the council has its own ability to declare an emergency. It's not confined to an official declaration, which is actually a statutory reference, that connotes really special police powers and curfew laws and those sorts of things under declaring emergency. This seems to suggest a more local process defined by the council. And so I think if you wish, there is opportunity for you, and in this instance, I don't know if I would call it an emergency, but it's not that much different than what I think the intent of this provision or exclusion is, we are under a regulatory directive, a mandate, and are facing fines if we choose not to follow it. And so I think there are some parallels and similarities in that regard, and should you wish to go down that road, that's an option you could pursue. And again, I've had the town attorney considering this, and will be providing some legal guidance to you. I certainly will have it for next Thursday.
So, and I'm sorry, the legal leaves for me. So this, this is the declaration of such emergency by the town council shall be conclusive. What exactly does that mean? Means, once we decide it, it's the emergency? We can say it's Tuesday, and that's an emergency, because it's Tuesday, and then that's it? It's the emergency?
So to me, a conclusive statement is, to me, regulatory requirement, we must replace this, the current regulatory, I mean, there's going to have to be legal, it's going to have to be very specific, it can't be open-ended, so that you can continue the emergency, so it keeps standing.
I see what you're saying.
I suspect the town attorney will be advising that, should you wish to make this declaration, you should provide rationale for that, kind of a finding, if you will. And it may be strong enough to make the finding on the fact that it's a regulatory mandate that we must comply with. That's an option that you can consider, and I'm pleased that you've preserved other options, should you need or wish to go there, which would, could include putting on the June ballot, if that's the will of the council, so you kept that option alive in front of you.
Do we know what the penalty, penalties would be, what the fines would be, if we?
I don't, but I'll certainly research that and be able to advise you. The other complicating factor, and I'll accept full responsibility, is we have awarded contract to this work, materials are, have been manufactured, they're still at the manufacturer, but the work is due, it's a 60-day work period, due to commence in May.
Is the initial O L A for that?
Well, we've only, next to nothing, but our vendor has undoubtedly committed funds for materials that aren't in his or our possession, but manufacturers have built them to our specification, so there are contractual issues that I'm understanding and working with.
There's typically cancellation clauses, we have to pay for the work done to the point, or work completed up to this point, so.
The good news, most of this, this equipment, I don't believe is custom, in that it arguably would have value to other folks in other projects, but having said that, there are contractual issues I need to be aware of and respect.
So I, again, I don't mean to speak for anybody else, but for me, I'd like to see what those penalties and those requirements would be, should we, should we not move this forward, or should we move it forward to referendum, and it doesn't pass, what the consequences to that would be?
I think the difficult part is determining what regulatory fines and penalties are going to be, because one thing that you've learned, even though in a very different environment, is that depending upon how rigorous the situation is, I'm sure the fines will be significantly higher than the proposed, or violating, you know, that whole issue around dogs on the beach and the piping hoppers, we were fined pretty high, being threatened with a fine was pretty high, and kind of outrageous, and they're, and they're willing to extend the money, and so something of this nature, where you have a, you know, an expired oil tank that is dangerous to the environment, you're talking, I've seen this as far as, you know, banking for different commercial transactions, you're talking a lot of money, and the longer it goes out, the fines get bigger, the penalties get higher, so.
And I'm just looking for a point of order magnitude. I'm not looking for a fine that, you know, it's a $30,000 fine, and we'll calculate that in over five years, or whatever, until we get it done. I just, I'm looking for order magnitude, if we don't.
I will certainly be able to quote your range, we're not in any kind of notice violation or any kind of area where that regulatory authority has told us what the fine is, but I can certainly give you the bookends of what that could be.
That's fine for me.
And doesn't federal law supersede state law, which would supersede local law?
But we have lawyers.
No, but that process of that would be.
Yes, but it depends on interpretation. I will state for, state for the record, I believe that the council should declare an emergency, and we funded our bond, and mandated by federal law that we need to replace an underground oil tank. It's a declared emergency.
Yeah, I think you will, you made comments to this effect last night, this underscores or reminds me of some inconsistencies, or some improvements that really need to be considered. This is not something, not that I don't respect the voters' opinion, and when appropriate, we should get their opinion, but there are certain circumstances that I couldn't expect the voters to understand, the sort of financial penalties that we may face, or the environmental hazards that might come from non-compliance.
The thing about this, so if penalties exceed $400,000, we'll have to go to a referendum to get their approval to pay those, right?
Well, no, no, because, I mean, again, I think it's a question of whether it's discretionary spending, or whether it's obligatory spending, right? And I think that's kind of where we're at right now. It's not like if we could choose to put this off, we leave this off, or we're driving the schedule for this. It sounds like we're being mandated, we're being directed to do this, you know, because that's why I want to see what the consequences are. If you choose to make the decision to put this out to referendum, and it fails, what does that do to the impact, how does it impact the town?
I mean, there are other options that you could consider, you could appropriate the money, and thereby not need voter approval, but this is limited to indebtedness only. The other option is to do it in multiple pieces, which I do not recommend under the threshold, so there are other options, but I think those could be viewed, and frankly, are a direct evasion of those requirements. So I'm glad that you have a number of options still preserved at this point. So I'll have that for you and report next Thursday.
And they'll need the, they'll need something for Tody, if it's going to go into the referendum rate, she'll need something.
And we'll have time if we bring it up next week. Item number six is future meeting dates, I'm not going to run through all of them, I'll just mention that next Wednesday is the budget forum. It is April 26th, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Wentworth School, and then also Thursday the 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we'll be meeting back here to cover community services and administration.
And I would just like to add, tomorrow at 3:30, we have a joint finance committee.
Oh, I didn't saw that, that's right, 3:30. Thanks. With that, item number seven, I sent a couple of comments, anyone who would like to get up and speak? Not seeing any, motion to adjourn.
Seven.
On my favor, and we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Pat.